Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
It is 5:31 and we will start with the pledge of allegiance. So, here on the second page, we do like to make a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, the Constitution, the Constitution of the United States of America, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, so we have all of our members in attendance. Chris and Jalen, Jim and Bill on speakerphone. I've got some problems here. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
I don't have any.
Okay, if not, communications and public comment.
I don't see anyone on the screen and nobody here, so...
Okay, so review and approve the minutes from October 25th and November 7th. Looking at October 25th, does anyone have corrections?
Just to note, oh, I understand.
Go ahead.
Did you have something?
I didn't know.
No, okay. Well, there is at least one I made me a vote for. She says the vote passed. And really, if there was a real vote and if it was unanimous, she should say "passed unanimously." I mean, you're supposed to give that account.
Right.
And it may be those instances where you are saying, you're seeing no objection, I declare the vote passed, but she should write that out too.
Okay.
So that people know that basically it's unanimous. If, of course, if the vote is not unanimous, then you're supposed to, the minute taken, you're supposed to write that down.
Okay, so we'll get that changed to unanimously on that. First one. And I think that's, those are the only ones on the first page, right? Oh, yeah, passes unanimously to go into exec session two. And the only other correction I had is on the second page. It wasn't, it's not projected enrollment. For Saxons River, it's current enrollment. So that needs to be changed to current. So, anything else? If not, the minutes we approved that with corrections were October 25th. All right, November 7th.
We've had a parent and a community member that were in attendance when they helped with their list. The parents?
They did not put, give a name?
Because, no, those parents were, only came for exec session. I mean, they weren't here at the beginning, I mean, so we could imagine.
And for confidentiality, we left off, we left their names without putting, like I said, a date for exec session.
Only?
But I agree with you, they're not on there.
I did.
And again, at the bottom of that page, the renovation of the kitchen, get that corrected to unanimously. The other one is, okay, unanimously. Okay, so those minutes, we'll accept those minutes and approve them with the correction. Reports, superintendent, point, CEOs, kitchen, upgrade on there, just so that you could give us a upgrade on that along with anything else that you want to tell us.
So with the kitchen, we're still waiting on a quote from the plumbers. So we've got an electrician quote, we've gotten, we've got the quotes on the materials and the other work. So it was just a waiting on the plumber and Jim DeValle leaving. Harley's really been on top of this and been following through with it. And so that was on Friday, I just asked him, you know, to give me an update of where we were. And so he said, that's what they were waiting on. And he expressed his own frustration with us, like move, stop, move, stop. But it's also one of the reasons we didn't do this as like one big project with a, an architect and everything like that. We wanted to do it so we could save a little bit of money because it was going to be double the amount of money if we'd had a company do everything. And so that creates like grabbing at different people. So Harley and I have a meeting coming up this week and with me coming back. And so we should be pretty much all set to push everything up right here before Thanksgiving.
So you're pushing it up to the state ultimate?
For project approval, right. So that'll go up for project approval with the, the hope here is to start acquiring things. We've already moved out to purchase the, we've got approval from that for the state for the outside freezer, which is what we did at the high school. Because that had a nine month lead time on it. So we moved forward with that. And then we can also begin starting to purchasing these goods and getting them in the pipeline just because it's a, you know, we want to make sure that the way supplies work, that we got all the pieces coming in. Harley's been assured by the vendor that they should all be ready to go, just matter getting, getting orders on these.
Yes.
You know, I can, let me just see if I can find it here. We sent a letter out, just so the board is aware, we sent a letter out that went to our middle school community, just talking about the bullying and harassing and that, you know, there's been, obviously we experience it and we don't tolerate it, but we wanted to address it because we know it's kind of on everyone's radar, it's on our radar, but so we had sent that out. We felt like it was timely, I was going to try and get the board to be a part of it, but we didn't want to make a deal out of it. So that letter went out this morning. We're doing some things with an assembly that's going on there, just to address some of the things that we've noticed going on. We're working with the Greater Falls Community Justice Group, they've been coming in and working with our students and student council. And just looking to address issues and not get them to the point where, you know, we've seen at the high school where we hear that folks say, you know, this happened in middle school and nothing got done. So we want to address it and I think Mr. Bailey's been very proactive in doing that.
Is the restoring of justice person, are they involved in that?
Yes, they are, yeah. So Carrie Newton, who's the SU coordinator, has been very much involved in it. And then as we started, our whole plan was at the beginning of the school year that Carrie Newton would kind of be here at the opening of school and be part of that transition and working with the, Bill McHugh, who's the RP, he runs the RP.
He's the staff person here?
He's the staff person on duty, yeah. So she's been working very closely with them, but also working with, she's that bridge between the community justice, Greater Falls Community Justice, and she's been kind of working that. And we're with Kelly O'Ryan, we're looking at a couple other pieces. This is not just the middle school, you know, it's the high school. So we're looking at how do we address things district wide or SU wide, but then also very specific, making sure we're addressing them from the middle school.
Thank you, Andy.
Sure.
Principals.
Laura and Carrie and Henry.
Let's do, let's let Henry go first because I think he's got the opportunity to be at later.
Yes, hi guys. I do, I'm attending via Zoom. I have a couple of parent conferences I have to attend at 6:15 and 6:45, so this is just easiest for me to duck out. So, things are going, you know, Andy kind of filled in a little bit here of what's been going on at the middle school, on, you know, the work we were doing with the Greater Falls, you know, justice system there and what we're trying to put in place here at the middle school to stop some of the bullying and racism and stuff like that here with the kids here now. So then that way it doesn't obviously bridge to the high school or the hope anyways. But a lot of other good things going on here in the building. You know, one thing I want to highlight here is that every Friday, we do our morning assembly in the auditorium and, you know, lasts probably about 15 to 20 minutes. And one of the big things we do on Fridays are celebrations. And we like to celebrate all the students throughout the course of that week and all their academic achievements. And the list keeps growing and growing. So every Friday, I've noticed, especially for the last three weeks, it would start off with, you know, a half a dozen students and now we're up to, you know, 15 to 20 different students that we recognize every Friday, which is kind of a, kind of a big deal and something to kind of look at and something I praise the kids for, for all their hard work. As I already mentioned, we had parent teacher conferences today, a couple that are still going on until seven o'clock tonight. Those slots filled up quickly, which was great. We offered that via Zoom and also in person. So it was kind of good to see all the parents today. And I had the opportunity for several hours to work the door downstairs and meet some of those parents that I haven't, haven't done up to this, this point. So on Friday, we had a number of band and choir members that attended the district music festival. Two band members and six choir members, to be exact. The kids worked really hard here daily. We have a pretty good choir program going on right now and band as well. They're planning the winter concert that originally was going to take place in December, but we're going to be pushing that back till January or, or February. But kind of looking forward to resting and rebooting here and for all the kids to be doing the same and hit the ground running for the last few weeks before we head into winter break. So that's all I got.
Thank you, Henry. And your, your numbers are still at 2:43?
Uh, 2:42.
2:42, okay, thank you. I think you are going to give out to the board members a breakdown of that and we'll look forward to that in the next few days.
Yeah, and thank you for, Henry, I'd asked Henry for that. He, I just given, he stretched pretty thin and everything, I was going to take care of that and just didn't, didn't get to it. He said it to me last week where, you know, I was on leave. So I should be able to break that down tomorrow and get that out to you guys.
Great, thank you. The schedules for students and...
It's just, it's a lot of attachments. I think we can put it all in one spreadsheet for what's left.
Thank you. Any other questions for Henry?
The other, well, the other thing that on an ongoing basis is we like to get a feel for the attendance.
Yeah, I think that's included with that because maybe now we are looking right on that, but we'll have that before, definitely before.
Attendance should be kind of a regular.
Attendance should be a regular basis, yes.
And that's a huge thing we've been talking about going forward here as we head towards the second trimester, December 5th, is trying to put in some incentives here to get the attendance up. That's a big goal of mine, something that I think is important, to get all the kids in the building on a regular basis.
Right, sounds like a good plan. Any other questions? Okay, if not, Laura, do you want to go next?
I would love to. Okay, let's see, our enrollment stands technically at 77, although we have 76 students in the building. One student has moved but has not quite enrolled at their new school. So we have 14, 15 in our kindergarten, 14 in first grade, 17 in second grade, 15 in third grade and 16 in fourth grade. On November 7th, the Lions Club came to SRES for the annual vision screening. Thank you to Nurse Jen Avon for coordinating this event and to the Lions Club for conducting the screenings. They produce a report that goes home with each student and then families are able to follow up on those screenings. So it really is a valuable, a valuable screening tool. On November 10th, our own Mr. Bill Morse, an local veteran, visited Saxons River Elementary to share his experience being in the Navy. Students asked lots and lots of questions and we all learned something new. So thank you, Bill. On November 14th, Ella Katamatory, I always say her name wrong, Ella Katamatory and Mr. Marty Gallagher of the Bellas Falls Rotary visited with our fourth grade class. And each fourth grader was gifted seven bucks and a handmade beautiful book bag as part of the Free to Read Everyday event. So a huge thank you to Ella and the Bellas Falls Rotary. On November 17th, the SRES safety team facilitated an options based drill and we walked as a school to one of our relocation sites so that staff and students alike were able to participate in what it should look and sound like should such a drill be necessary. The safety team was super impressed with how quick and efficient the drill went. We actually planned about 45 minutes and we were back in like 20. So it was great and student behavior was exemplary. They did a fantastic job. Today, our safety team met to align our emergency operations plan with the FEMA checklist that Andy had provided. And by doing so, we were able to identify which parts of the plan needed additional information and this will be the basis for future meetings. We made a tree of thanks again and in our lobby, it is displayed and filled with leaves of gratitude. Each student and staff member wrote what they were thankful for on a leaf and the display is really touching. As Henry shared, parent teacher conferences were today, most of our families attended and/or scheduled the conference for a different day. So a big shout out to our families and I will provide our participation rate in my next report. Our winter sports program is coming together. It's been a work in progress for sure, a little touch and go, but it is definitely coming together. And I'll be sending out some paperwork for families in the folders on Monday, November 28th. I did want to acknowledge the work of Deb Cardane, our Director of Instruction and Innovation. She is doing a ton of work that I am super impressed with, not just supporting teachers with phonological awareness during team meetings, but just how she is running our in-service days and the coordination of our in-service days, it's really outstanding. So shout out to Deb for that. Upcoming December 2nd, first trimester ends. December 13th will be our white elephant sale. December 14th is early release day and we'll be doing some school-based professional learning focused on the first dimension of teaching and learning, which is purpose. And specifically, we'll be focusing on writing, sharing, discussing and assessing learning targets. And then lastly, December 21st is an early release day and we will be having a special performance for students in the morning. Happy to take any questions that you may have.
Any other questions? Laura, I have one. As far as the white elephant sale, I know in your newsletter it gets said about sending things in. When do you need those by?
Well, the PTO will be setting up on the 12th in the late afternoon. So anytime before the 12th or even on the 12th would be fine.
Okay, great, that's a good thing to get out there for people in case. You're looking for, you know, basically newish type items so that if you've got anything that's new or practically new and in excellent condition, you know, so the students can buy things for Christmas gifts for family. We do that at Saxons River and at Central, so.
Yeah, and I will say that it's, it is planned so that it is more of a gift giving and not necessarily for one holiday or another. We specifically planned it so that students that celebrate Hanukkah could also have gifts for family members. But thank you definitely for plugging that, the need for gently used items for sale. I appreciate that.
Right, thank you. Anything else from anyone? Oh, and Bill said you're welcome. Okay, Carrie, thank you, Laura. Carrie?
Good evening, thanks Laura. Always hard to go last, but good at the same time. So you'll have some similar reports too, but I just want to start with, Central has 142 students. We have 10 in preschool, which are actually not part of our 142. We have 32 in kindergarten, 29 in first grade, 19 in second, 34 in third and 28 in fourth. And we too have been busy with parent teacher conferences today. We thank you to all the families and staff involved. We do have a reminder that trimester one will close on Friday, excuse me, December 2nd. Report cards will be going home on Friday, December 16th. We do want to say a big shout out today to the Bellas Falls Subway who donated a six foot sub for our teachers and staff today. That was a great addition to their time. So we appreciate the support and it was wonderful and be sure to check them out in the square. Thank you, Subway. Also, thank you to Bill Morse and Ashley McCants. They came to CES and were discussing their knowledge as veterans. And so they discussed what it was like to be in the service and then took some questions and answers and the students had a very good time at our Monday morning meeting. We really appreciate their support. We also want to thank the Rotary Club for the recent clothing donation. They have been working on some field trip assistance as well, so we're planning out some trips with them. And they are also hosting the Bellas Falls Follies as a fundraiser on Thursday, December 1st. So the doors will open at 6:30 and the show begins at 7:30. There's a silent auction and tickets are available at the Opera House website. So be sure to check it out and hopefully come support our community. We are also working on our small group interventions as part of our tiers one and two instruction. Teachers are taking small guided math and literacy groups and then our interventionists are taking additional groups to support our students. As we get to the end of the first trimester, we'll review our student list and then make adjustments as necessary to these small groups. We too will have our shopping mall on Thursday, December 15th. So we thank the folks that have already begun donating items and then we're looking forward to any others. So similar to what Laura was saying, we will take them up through the 12th, maybe the 13th, as we get them ready for the 15th. So if you have any, please make them in the next 10 days or so. We really appreciate that. We also would like to thank the Nature Museum in Grafton and the Jane Moreno Purdy Fund for their assistance in getting our students to the museum. We're still working on a couple more classes going, but we were able to have second grade go recently and that was fabulous. A huge shout out to Carrie Pickering and Kelly Green and the entire staff of CES. We brought back this year the cross grade level day on the Friday before the holiday for Thanksgiving. So students were grouped into nine groups and broken up with students from all grade levels. So they worked on a lot of Thanksgiving activities, songs and cards. It was fabulous and took a ton of work and so we really appreciate their work on that. Later that afternoon, so you want to thank Peter Laurie, he coordinated our walking field trip to our place. We were making donations to our place. Our goal was to send them 300 items and we were pleased to say that we got over 800 items for food and personal hygiene items. And a big shout out to Mr. Gee's too, they did a lot to donate. So it was a way to go for everybody. We really appreciate your support and hopefully having some more Thanksgiving items for people who are local. We are working on the mobile dentist, so pretty soon you'll be getting a paperwork about that after vacation, this, this holiday break. Somebody from the North Star Clinic will be coming in to work with our students and send home papers for the mobile dentist. So be on the lookout if you wish to have your child's teeth cleaned at school. And then also I echo Laura's statements about Deb Cardane and the PD work. It has been great. We have another PD day tomorrow, so we thank families for your patience as we work on that. Today was the conferences and then tomorrow is the PD day, so. And just finally, we wish you all a wonderful Thanksgiving and hope you have a great break with your family and friends. Any questions or comments?
Anything for Carrie? I think we're all set. And again, those items to carry for their shopping, it really helps for gifts at this time of year for families. So probably, as Laura said, mail items for others are probably shorter supply than the others.
Correct. Anything we'll take for gently used and brand new is great. Thanks.
Welcome. Do we need the elementary ones for any of the rest of us? And how about for Henry? We might need him for one of the business items in exec session. Do we need him?
I don't know if we need him. I mean, but I mean, he's wanting to join in.
So, how many of you are...
I know he has parents, so he may need to jump off.
In between your conferences, so if you want to check back in and see where we're at and that kind of thing, that would be great. Okay? And Laura and Carrie, we will let you go and enjoy your conferences for the rest of the evening with your parents. And we definitely do need you for our budget meeting, which is the next meeting on the 5th. Okay, all right. Thank you very much for all the information. Okay, our next item is committees. Policies on there first, the policy to be met. And there will be a meeting set up for one time in December, if you can get one to fit in. We are looking at one policy to improve tonight and we reviewed the alcohol and drug policy and the class policy, our last one, and that will be posted very soon for people to look at, but it's not been posted yet. Finance, Chris, you're on finance. Do you have, can you update us on that or?
Well, WASU approved its budget. It allows me last week, so that's great news. But solid budget and will support the districts. So, and now we have, what it works is assessment flow out of the SU budget and the running. We have to have that potentially centralized. Plus some numbers from the state and a few other things. Try to drag it out, but.
For our new member of the year, there are certain functions that are centralized.
Yes.
I need a little bit of an orientation, so I'm getting used to this, so I appreciate it. Okay, so the assessments come from the overall?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Right, so there are many functions that are centralized, central office, either for convenience and efficiency or by law, such as specialization and consolidating by law. So, I'm happy about that.
And we appreciate all the work that we did on that, Chris.
John, sitting beside you, did quite a bit.
Yeah, Jason's on that committee too. Jason, I was on that committee, but it was, it was a lot of good work.
Yeah, and I think Jim's, Jim, seeing those records are so easy to work with that it just, just makes it nice to kind of go through it. And I think as you, you know, it takes a few years.
It is a lot of information to get up through.
Yeah, yeah, it is. But.
There'll be a quiz next week. But you'll see.
I'll get my tabs out.
Even though what, you know, initially looks kind of mind boggling, you look at it and start to realize, oh, yes, these are actually, I'm looking at the same thing in three different ways.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know if you have anything to add.
And we're going to, and I'm glad you didn't kiss, kiss, I'm here, we didn't put yours on, this is separate, because I wasn't sure where we were at, because you were out. We were doing the budget, we were doing the agenda.
The reports where we begin to date.
Yeah, I have some.
All right. So, I think that, and I've divided this out by school. If you'd like to see it in a different format, you know, having them all, because I thought blending them all together, I don't know.
I think this is good.
Yeah, it's manageable. And I just looked at, for instance, on page one is the, the middle school and I had talked with Henry about, you know, the three items, we'll notice at the very bottom, it looks like... You'll notice at the very bottom, it looks like he's got 210 to the good. And I pointed out to him, there's three items. Line 44, which has 77,000, that hasn't been timed. And line 55 has roughly 40,000. And the one place that we were short is line 61, the heating line. So those are the only things that I highlighted. But it doesn't look that bad. So, and I do have...
I have one card that won't be included today, but it's applicable to our budget discussion next time.
Yep.
And that is if you look at the teacher salary line for the, if you look at the tone of what's been covered and what's been expended, it actually exceeds our budget number for next year. Now, I think our budget number for next year doesn't have the nurse salary. But it, so the obvious question is why is that running so much above the budget?
And the only thing I can say is the 24 in the budgeting process is actual live-linked data. Now, yes, now that's not to say, I mean, what could happen? I could miss somebody. Maybe there's a math teacher that isn't in there, but I tried to cull that all out to get it correct.
Also some less, probably some less expensive teachers.
That could be.
That's part of it.
With retirements, that could be.
And I don't know, is there, are all the positions filled?
No.
That'll do it too.
But it raises the question of why this is so tall.
And I do want to say, this is a crossover budget. Now, by that, I mean that's, I collect teacher salaries into this object code 5111. Now, I have to force that code because previous budget, they used a, for some, they used a 5171. So, and you can find that. If you look in the backup, they'll copy. I will say, this is a crossover linking budget and the bottom line is correct, but it doesn't always connect as we would hope. Sorry, there's no easy way to do that. So I just will point out, I mean, I think Central, Central has 483,000 to the goods and that's page nine. And I'm just looking at what I call a summary object, sorry. And again, she's still very good on line 30. You'll see contracted services is 89,000. And, you know, when you think about it, I mean, we've got one more month and we'll be halfway. So it gives you some good indicators.
The contracted services, that's at least in part HCRS or regular enforcement of HCRS?
Regular enforcement, yes. Yes.
That's a lot of it. So we just haven't been built for...
It could be, but very well be, Chris.
Every school.
Also, I'm not sure, I'm not sure they were totally shelled.
Ironically, the, my comment on middle school, it's kind of inverse over at Central. The line, the line three, which is, we're kind of 82,000 to the good and that just doesn't seem like...
Public.
Public to be, I mean, but anyway, you know, I will sort that out, but.
And it is, it is tough because it frustrates everybody when you can't link it. Somebody said, wow, Jesus, what is this data? I mean, this is, is this crap data? It's really not. I mean, I'm doing the best that I can at crossing over and I'm doing it, manipulating it by hand because the budget is what you put last year, but it doesn't align necessarily to the sum. So try not to get frustrated. It's a lot. The principals are frustrated as well. And the only thing I can say is I'm sorry. This is painful but necessary. All right, so Saxon's River. And again, if you look at Saxon's River on page 15, and you're 7,000 to the good. We will pick up a little bit on the unemployment, which is line 21. And we'll pick up line 25, some of the disability. Both of those will net to the good.
Similar comment on line three. They're short 43 over.
Yeah.
Again, that just doesn't, well, but again, if there's retirements and stuff like that.
The one thing you can be assured of, and that is 203, the 509461. And I say that between, between the two objects, the 5111 and the 5171. Those, those I kind of took together. I brought in the nurse, the guidance counselor and... Someone else, the principal? Yes. So, so it should net off. The last page that I broke out was on page 21. And that is kind of the Bellas Falls assessment, you know, stuff, it's low, location 201. And so it has the assessment piece as well as the bond. And again, I think that what shows is 271,000 to the good. I think you're going to be fine on.
Jim, is the... The, there's nothing encumbered at this point. Is that encumbered, it's just not been made or is it, are we done?
On the interest?
Yeah, on those two principles.
Hasn't been done.
Okay, so they just need to be in.
Yes, that's correct.
And that's, that's 269, which is 271 is the remaining debt service.
And it should say Rockingham General Club of Eastland School.
Thank you, Chris.
You had to stick something in for us to...
I was covering it.
Thank you.
I have one, I got a chance to review this today and the principals are gone, but maybe Andy can... The board has a strong feeling about this, but supplies and books have not been spent. Or maybe there is some in the pipeline. But the, I will say, Rockingham taxpayers have been very generous with supplies and books for students for decades. And, but you're not buying supplies and books for next year, you're buying them for this year. So really, all the supplies and books should be purchased very soon, like December?
Yeah, no.
And then just a few very perishable supplies still have to be, and teachers should have their lesson plans done for the, you know, the unit should be all planned out, the supplies and the books should be bought and...
A lot, a lot has been like, you rank funds to purchase a lot of things. So, but I would have to go break out to know why those supplies. And I think, I think the middle school with the absence of administration has been part of it, but...
But I think, Mike, I'm just one board member, but I think the board should later, you know, as we get into the early part of next year, January, increase those lines.
Well, if they don't need them at this point, I think you're totally correct.
Exactly, I agree.
Yeah. So I think, you know, I think just letting the principals know that they should be making sure that people have what they need. I don't want to short anybody what they want, but they shouldn't be buying stuff for next year or going on a shopping spree in May, which I've seen before.
And I'm afraid a lot of it, a lot of the making the left will be going into the oil. I just, I think that's...
Well, I quite, yeah, I figured those lines were all wrong. And I'm also wondering if even in the budget, Jim alluded to this, whether we've got enough in there yet for the oil, but who's to say?
It's, it's interesting though, when I met at Grafton, Hardy said, you know, because I had jacked it up 20,000. And he said, I don't think you're gonna have enough. And they put it at 30,000 for the middle school. I don't know. I mean, that's a hard one to call because they say it's not going to go back down.
Well, we've got a price that we're at four, we're locked at four.
For this year.
For this year. So the problem is, how much did you have in the tanks? And I won't say this, it's expensive, but I always like to make sure those tanks are topped if you've been afforded. Because then you know where you're starting.
The, here at the middle school, they also have the pellet boiler. Has the cost of pellets reflected the same kinds of increases as oil?
I just bought pellets for my house.
I heard that they hadn't gone up that much.
They haven't gone up, I would say, the same...
Right.
Jump.
Degree.
Right.
And I, is it a pellet perk or is it a wood chip?
It's pellets.
Is pellets here?
Here it's pellets. It's wood chip in Westminster, but it's pellets here.
We can find out what that cost is, but I don't, I don't know what it's jumping.
But it's, you know, my impression was that they hadn't gone up to the same extent as oil and gas, but...
Right.
But the, you know, it was a while there, a couple of years ago, when the pellet boiler wasn't being used that much. The price of oil was down. We're having problems with the hopper, this and that. But I think it was a straightened out, so that we're using pellets as a put in there.
That's my understanding. This is the year.
Yeah, this is the year.
So click check on that. See what we're on that. I'd be appreciative. Anything else on?
The only thing I want to say is next, early next week, we're going to start sending out the tuition invoices and getting those things, you know.
Nice to get it done in the right year this year. Thank you for all of that, for all your hard work.
I do have a question about the books and supplies. I know, what is the name I listened to? And this is also just a reminder because it's something that I've worked on, but I know, I believe, period said that there were the protocols that were coming. Is that, I know that some of the work that produced, we lose our political awareness. And so I know those are some things for that. Is that something you can do a grant or is that purchased?
So, yeah, we, in fact, Stu's texting me, you were asking questions, there's still a lot. Is, we have been, they've been working with Dev and spending down the grant because we actually carried over almost half a million dollars in title funds. And we're going to lose them if we don't use them this year. And part of that is because with ESSER and every, like the type, like, it sounds horrible, you can't spend money that fast. I mean, and so we rolled over, we were giving a buy, usually you can only roll over 15% maybe title funds. We were giving a buy last year, giving a buy again this year. And so we're trying to expend those funds, buying decolables and supplies and whatnot and not hit the lower budget. So that's, you know, right. So that is a lot of what that, we're doing with those decolables and...
Which our taxpayers will be very appreciative of.
It fits in right with the, with the reading, as you're saying. It's all the intervention we're doing, so it's, it was school-wise, so.
Any other questions?
I would just, I would just add, we're at other...
We're still on...
We're still on budget, sorry.
Finance stuff. Okay, go ahead, Jake. She has something.
On other, the buildings and grounds, we're waiting on Molly Danik at the WASU to work on our building visits and assessments. And Andy has given us an update on all of the different ESSER-related projects that we think can get funded for our rotten old schools. But there's certainly more to do, but I think we're, as far as our budget community, our, I'm sorry, our buildings and grounds. Period is concerned, I think we've done as much as we can at this point.
The, we just received, we had facility audits done by an engineering company, so we received those. We got, I asked them to do the middle, I got the middle school and the high school back first. And I've gotten Central, I haven't gotten Saxon's River, but I sent those off to Rick Human to look at. We have an opportunity to look at them and make any corrections and send them back. So I'm waiting for those corrections from Rick, so we can send them back and then have buildings around shared. What was really nice is they break out the next 10 years on when they think they should be replaced and done. So, like here at the, here at the middle school, one of the things they reflected is the parking lot in the back, the front of the parking lot, that area back there. And the need to, you know, repaving, but also like water drainage and stuff like that. So they, they got into some real specifics and some of the things we already acknowledged and knew about. But then just, you know, preventative maintenance things so that we can try and get that on. Like so as we're looking at it, okay, we can put either ones aside here or we gotta move this up because this is going to go type of thing.
It's awesome.
Yeah, it is. Very in-depth report.
Thank you, Jim, for bringing that up. Yes, we're waiting for, wanting to schedule the other half of the buildings.
Yep, I think we just...
That's what we're going to look at.
Westminster.
She was looking at possible dates, so hopefully soon and then we can...
And she was just waiting for me to get back.
Will you do Central?
We didn't do Central, it was Westman's.
Westman's, and then there's also that Westminster.
Westman's.
I think those were the three, because we did Graft Athens, we did the middle school, we did the high school.
Exactly.
Okay. It's in one of the WASU committees as well. It's looking at all of them. Okay, so go on to, that was all of the PIP for PIPs. Do we meet Jim or can we let Jim?
I would ask him.
Thank you, Jim. But the next one for the budget, we definitely need you.
Okay.
So if you could plan that into your schedule for us. Okay, under new business for discussion in action, we've kind of already discussed the letter unless you've done anything else.
No.
Okay, so, and the new position of administrative support, we probably want to move that to executive session. Okay, so review and approve the policy. That's D3 Responsible Computer Network and Internet Use. It was posted on October 14th. That was approved at the issue level on Wednesday. So do you have a motion?
I'm moved that we approve the policy, D3 Responsible Computer Network, Internet Use.
Thank you, Jim. Is there any discussion? Any questions? Bill, any, any question?
Uh, no, sorry.
Okay, so then we'll vote on that. Jim, how do you vote?
I'm, oh, Jim.
Jim, how do you vote?
I'm.
Bill, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh, Chris?
Yes.
And, yes, sorry. And I go yes. So that was unanimous. Hold business, preliminary discussion, we've kind of touched on teacher schedules, subjects and attendance percentages, and Andy said he would get that out to us because that didn't get finalized.
So I just have to pull it together, so it's one report, so that it's readable for you, and then as far as student assessment results, Deb Carden actually had to leave for medical reasons today, that was unexpected, so, I'll have to postpone, I just, she's gotten her stuff together, but keeping it on the report.
Okay, so we will schedule that again for, not, not for the fifth, but for.
But I'll have her get the stuff out to you ahead of time, so that you have at least time to review it, so that it's not just all brand new information at home, so.
That would be wonderful, thank you. Okay, we'll do director's comments before the executive session, so, Bill, do you have any comment that you want to share?
My only comment would be to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, please, and just take a moment to realize how we, how lucky we are, and how grateful we should be, we'll be thankful to be able to do that, thank you.
Thank you, Bill, Chris?
No, I don't, just happy Thanksgiving, Jim.
Caitlin?
Yeah, I do.
Jim?
I'm good.
Yeah, I would just say, especially with Thanksgiving coming up, please remember that it is a day of Thanksgiving, and a day of thanks, and continue to do some kind of kindness for somebody each day, it will make our world a better place. I just appreciate all of the board members for all they do, there's a lot of work that gets done, and they are well appreciated, okay, so I would support a motion to go into executive session.
Well, we'll go into executive session to discuss.
Personnel.
Personnel matter, anything else?
Contract.
Got a contract matter, prior knowledge of which might place the district or the persons involved in this, or something to that effect.
Anybody?
I think I have that one.
And who would you like to invite?
And we are waiting superintendent and, I guess, if the system is available.
So, Chris, give a motion to enter into executive session at 6:23 PM to discuss a personnel and a contract matter, prior public knowledge could place the board and or individuals at a disadvantage in finance administration, and middle school administration. The board came out of executive session at 7:10, and there will be no action that's needed to be taken tonight, so I would set the next meeting for December 5, it'll be at 5:30 for a budget, meaning if there's anything that comes out that, that we have to address, we'll hold it, we'll hold a special meeting for the board earlier than that, starting November, but I'm looking at, hopefully keeping that name until we adjust a budget.
Is it 5:30 on that?
5:30 on December 5.
And that's going to be here?
At the middle school, yes. Seems to be an easy place to hold it.
Do you know if Jim is going to do an update to the November version of the budget that we have?
I'm, I'm, I'm going to go out on a limb and say, yes, he is, but.
I had a discussion.
I mean, I'll remind him also, but he's, he's really good about getting those things up, but I'll.
He said yes, and he said he would be updating also, so sorry for interrupting.
No, 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 but I think, I think that's, that's.
Yeah, because if they're available ahead of time, I'll come down and pick it up, pick it up, because he's, he's trying to get it at the meeting.
And I had some things going through, but we were supposed to get back to them, so I want to circle around and touch base with Jim again.
Okay.
Questions?
Okay, yeah, if there's any questions.
If he's going to do another iteration, if he's not, then I don't need to.
Send, send questions to.
You can send them to.
Me somewhere as well.
Send them to Jim directly.
CC then.
No, CC, just CC me.
Of course, they.
Yeah. But, I mean, if you have anything general that you feel that you should be aware, that would be really good to do, thank you, Chris.
Be back.
And, as I, yeah, I just know that he definitely said he was going to come on next week and get out to us, so, okay, so if there's something else, if there's objection, I'm just going to call in adjournment at 7:13.